We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for January 2, 2024 to order. If you could please take the roll.
Councilman Delaney?
Here.
Councilman Whiting?
Here.
Councilman Contreras?
Here.
Councilman Laura?
Here.
And Mayor Lehman?
Here. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Item number three is approval of the agenda, and we're going to make a couple of minor changes here. We're going to add 11B, which would be liaison reports. And then I wanted to note that the 4A1 City Council minutes, the actual document is correct, but the memo has the wrong date on it, and just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
And both of those changes have been made online, sir.
Okay. Any other changes for the agenda? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second? Motion by Mr. Lara, second by Ms. Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consent business. Any changes to the consent business from staff or council?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Council? Mr. Whiting?
Motion to adopt the consent business.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Ms. Contreras? Mr. Reynolds? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent business items for January 2 of 2024. 4A1 are the City Council minutes. 4A2 designates individuals authorized to perform certain banking transactions. 4A3 is the designation of the official newspaper for the city. 4B1 is the 2024 tree pruning contract. 4B2 is a cooperative maintenance agreement on traffic signals with the county. 4C1 sets the public hearing date for a proposed vacation of a public sanitary sewer easement. 4C2 sets a public hearing date for proposed vacation of Summer River Street right-of-way. 4C3 awards a contract to 106 Group for creation of the Shakopee Riverfront Cultural Area National Registered District. 4D1 is surplus property, and 4D2 is a captain appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to... Item number five. Anybody in the audience that would like to address the City Council on a matter that's not on the agenda? Now would be the time to do that. If you have an item to talk to council about that's not on our agenda, now would be your opportunity. Anybody? Seeing none? We'll move on. Item number six, nothing removed. Item number seven, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Mr. Whiting?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion recess for EDA.
Sir, second? Motion second by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Madam President.
Call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for January 2, 2024. First, I'd like to call roll. Call the roll. Staff could please make a note of it. Then number two, we have approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second by Whiting. Yes, so we, Commissioner Lara and second by Commissioner Whiting. We have our EDA minutes. Any questions? Discussion? Oops, sorry, that was our agenda. So all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A motion passes. Number three, we have our consent business, and on there we have our EDA minutes. Anyone have any discussion on our EDA minutes? Discussion? Discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the EDA minutes for December 12.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Whiting. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Delaney, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, general business, we have our EDA bill list. Did anybody get a chance to see that? Any questions? Questions? No discussion? All right. So, no discussion on our report, our general business. So then we have number six. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to...
And we're going, sorry, we just, one quick, we will be adjourned to January 16, 2024 because we will have a presentation coming up then. So go ahead.
All right. I'll make an motion to adjourn to Tuesday, January 16, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second? By Commissioner Lehman, second. Okay. So you have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Did I say adjourn to the EDA? I meant recess.
Well...
Bad habit.
All noted.
So that brings us to 9A1. Discussing partnership with the Scott County CDA on affordable housing funds. We all should have the...
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're delighted to have Julie here with us. She is the executive director. Is that your title, Julie?
Yes.
Executive Director of the CDA. And she is here to talk about a Affordable Housing Aid Local Housing Trust Fund. Now, the county is going to go ahead and put something in place to, to put this together to begin with, but ultimately it's up to us to decide whether or not we want the county to manage these funds for us. For those in the audience, or for those online or on TV, this money was given to the city, and a statutory city in Minnesota actually doesn't do affordable housing. If you're a charter city, that certainly can be part of your charter. So we really don't have the expertise to handle these funds, but luckily, we have an organization that's well-respected in the county that does have the expertise. And with that, Julie?
Excuse me. Mr. Reynolds, will, will we have any say in how the dollars allocated to Shakopee are spent through the Scott County CDA?
Absolutely, and Julie will talk a little bit about that.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you.
Welcome, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and good evening, Mayor and council members, and Happy New Year. It's great to be able to start off the year here with Shakopee. So as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, there will be some additional funds that are coming to cities and counties across the state as a result of the measures that were passed in the latest state legislative session. So there will be, you can go ahead to the next slide. There are two different types of aids that's coming. There's a statewide affordable housing aid that Scott County and a number of cities in greater Minnesota received at the end of this year. And then the funds that will be coming here to Shakopee and other cities across the metro, as well as the seven counties, is called Local Affordable Housing Aid. LHA is what they're calling it. So this is as a result of a sales tax that was adopted, and the sales tax began collection October 1 of 2023. And the funds will then be distributed in July. You'll receive your first payment, and then your second payment will come in December. This will continue to come to your community for as long as the sales tax is in place and approved at the legislature. Next slide. The purpose of these funds by the legislature is to develop and preserve affordable housing, which, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, this is what the CDA does for you. The seven counties will be receiving these funds, and then here locally in Scott County, in addition to yourselves, Savage and Prior Lake will also be receiving a direct allocation of the funds. The next slide shows the projections that the legislature had put together. This is based on their estimate, but like I said, it will just be dependent upon what is available each year. The amounts will be distributed based on the number of cost burden households in the community, which you can see the number of households that are in both Scott County and then here in your community as well. And it will be updated annually for you, so each, each year, these numbers will change. This slide shows the qualifying projects that can be, that the funds can be used for. So really, the first bullet there are things that the CDA does currently across the county. So projects designed for the purpose of construction, acquisition, rehab, demolition, different financing projects. They are available for both rental and homeownership projects as well. But then there are additional uses that, that can be done, emergency rental assistance, support to nonprofit affordable housing developers. So each community, to the mayor's original question, each community can decide how best to use these funds. So having the flexibility is really a great use for these funds. In terms of project priorities, they do want you to prioritize homeownership projects at 80% of the area median income and rental projects at 50%. Again, this is how we are set up to operate currently. So our homeownership programs are serving people who are 80% and below, and then our rental projects are serving those folks at 50%. Then we are to also give priority to projects with households who have a number of barriers which are listed there as well. In terms of our agency's strategic goals, we have six of them. One of them is around increasing housing capacity in the county. So I pulled this goal up here because it really ties in well with the funds that we could use in partnership together. So we're looking to increase the supply of affordable housing units in the county, both homeownership and rental projects. We are looking at preservation of our existing stocks, so as our units continue to age, what are the strategies around being able to preserve those? We do not currently have a program, so we're looking at what are the things that we can do to ensure that those naturally occurring affordable housing projects can be taken care of as continued investments in the community. And then also looking at increasing homeownership opportunities. We're looking at ways to help people who are in our rental programs achieve homeownership as well, which ultimately, by doing these things, will be able to decrease the percentage of households who are cost burdened. To give you a sense of what are some of the proposed projects that we could be doing in partnership together, preservation of existing units, like I mentioned, acquiring and rehabbing rental units, purchasing land for future affordable housing development, doing different financing for developments, homeownership. We have a down payment assistance program that helps people become first-time homebuyers. We have the Community Land Trust Program where we're purchasing, rehabbing, and reselling homes. So these are examples of projects that can be used for these funds. In terms of how much time you have to spend the funds, like I mentioned, you'll be receiving your first payment in July, your second in December. You are given four years to spend the funds. What Mr. Reynolds had mentioned is that the CDA is working with Scott County to establish a local housing trust fund. That is a vehicle that would allow us additional time beyond the four years in order to have planning if we need to, to be able to assemble some additional funds together for different projects. But once you deposit the funds in the local housing trust fund, they are considered spent and would be utilized in your community. If funds are not spent within the timeframe, they would be returned to the Department of Revenue and would be used for different affordable housing projects. So just to give you a very high level as to what is a local housing trust fund, I view it as another tool in the toolbox. So it has to be established by an elected body, which is why Scott County is considering an ordinance to do that. And it would dedicate public sources of funds to address local housing needs. That's very high-level kind of what it is. If you look in the statute, the authorized expenditures do align with what the local affordable housing aid allows you to do. So like I mentioned, grants and loans, projects for acquisition, rehab, resale, down payment assistance, both rental projects and homeownership programs. So it does work very well. There are a number of benefits for the local housing trust fund, and I think the biggest one is the flexibility. So the needs here in Shakopee will look different than the needs in Prior Lake. Scott County's funds could be used anywhere in the county, so if you look at the landscape of our county, you have more urban areas and rural areas. So it does provide the flexibility to address local needs depending on, on where we're at in that community. Like I mentioned, the county will be considering adopting this ordinance, and then the CDA would be identified as the administrator of these funds under that ordinance. There are a number of different forces, different sources of funds that could be deposited in a local housing trust fund. So we're just talking about local affordable housing aid. However, the CDA could deposit funds that we have into this fund. Private folks could deposit funds, employers could deposit funds. There's just a number of different sources of funds that could be utilized for funding the local housing trust fund. But certainly, the local affordable housing aid is an eligible source of funds to deposit in these. So in terms of our proposed partnership, we would be pleased to be able to administer these funds on your behalf in your community, working together with Mr. Reynolds, his designated staff, to identify what are those priorities that you would like to see in your community. There are reporting requirements that are required by Minnesota Housing each year. We would report not only to you, but we would take care of reporting back to Minnesota Housing for these funds. And then I've already talked about, the CDA is already currently working with Scott County to adopt that ordinance. So with that, I would welcome questions, discussion.
Questions? Mr. Lara?
Yeah. So I'm a little confused because it sounds like we, as a city, have discretion as to what happens with these funds, but then I'm also hearing that Scott County is wanting to designate you guys as this, like, what happens if we choose to not go with the CDA and choose to do it in-house for some reason? It, it sounds like Scott County is just saying, nope, we're designating you guys, and we have to do it whether we want to or not.
Let me take a stab at this.
Sure.
If I'm wrong, you can correct me. Look at it as Scott County being the fiscal agent for this specific allocated state dollar amount. So at this point, what I'm understanding is they're strictly a fiscal agent.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so we would have separate agreements with...
Each city?
Each city. And the county also gets an allocation of funds. So they're looking at what are they going to do with their funds? What would the partnership with the CDA look like for a portion of those funds? So the local housing trust fund itself is a bank account. It's a tool that helps to facilitate these funds. But in terms of being able to use these individually, that's absolutely what we want to be able to work with you on.
Sure. I have a follow-up question, if I may. Each city will have their own individual trust, correct? It's not going to be pooled?
There's, we're, we're looking at adopting one housing trust fund, a local housing trust fund that would be across the region. However, these funds would be utilized in your community. So we would have an individual agreement with your city, with the other cities if they want to work with us, with Scott County as well. It just allows us to be able to use additional CDA funds with your funds more effectively during this process.
Sure. I guess my, my, my goal and my thought is that I want, we want to make sure that the funds are helping citizens of Shakopee, and it's not being pooled to help other, you know, area, you know, our focus is our constituents here.
Absolutely.
And just want to make sure that that's being done and taken care of here.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Whiting?
Comment on that first, and then I have a couple of questions and comments, but I think it might be of value to pool some of those funds at times when you have a certain project, maybe one year you may have a big project in Prior Lake, but then the next year we may go back and forth, but I don't know how the fund, if that's legal or not, but I can see the value in pooling the funds. But would you consider this type of service a human service, that more or less a county function would handle anyway?
So the legislative intent of these funds is to develop and preserve affordable housing. So it, it is more in the CDA's wheelhouse than a health and human service kind of function.
But a city doesn't have a, a service that would fit this. It may not be a human service, but it's not really under our value.
Right.
So having said that, what types of ideas would preserve affordable housing?
So there are, a lot of it is around rehab, doing projects that improve the capital asset of the program. So is it roof replacement? Is it window replacement? Are there mechanical systems that need to be replaced? Those types of activities in order to ensure that the property is well-maintained and continue to expand the useful life of that development.
Holds its value. If I may, I had a couple more jot it down here. So, and talking about the project list that the CDA is already doing in Shakopee, we're currently, the old central school site is your current project. I'm sure you're doing a lot of work on that, but we know you guys have worked with us in the first, the River City Center project and, and other projects throughout town. And you talked about the, the housing trust, and that's the project, one of the projects that we're looking at or talked about on Eagle Creek in, is it 18 out there?
Correct, yep.
So that's a project in kind of smaller lot sizes, a trust where people, the, the land kind of goes back and always stays in trust.
Yep.
So you guys are constantly working in our community already and have done that service for us. So this kind of funding, like you mentioned, would go to some of the targeted areas of homeownership at 80% of median income and that rental housing at 50%. So with your current list, would you have some ideas that you could throw out there? Would this fund some current projects, or do you have some things in mind for Shakopee or ideas?
Yeah. I think that homeownership is certainly a, a project with down payment assistance. You know, we are, we are going to be adding a first-time homebuyer class and teaching that in Spanish. And so we've been doing additional outreach to the Latino community and having a good response there. So we only have a certain number of, of funds that are designated for first-time homebuyer grants currently across the county. They were fully utilized in '23, even in this difficult market. So as we continue to do outreach, I think that's an area that could be of assistance with these funds. Our Community Land Trust, that's another project where we did receive some grant funding from Minnesota Housing, 2.5 million to assist with that project, so we'll be doing planning there. But being able to supplement with some additional funds can certainly help us increase the speed at which we can bring units online. You mentioned the central school site. We hope to be back before you in the first or second quarter here as we're working through those processes. But I think the other thing is, we're also looking at where are gaps? So we met with weatherization team, and we asked them, what are things that your funds cannot be used for in a development when they are working that these funds could help fill a gap in those units? So we talked about, is it radon mitigation? Is it some window replacements that they can't do because they can't get the R-value in, in the efficiency to improve? So we're looking at those types of things as well. I think as your city is doing rental inspections, I think engaging with your inspector to understand what he is seeing in the community, to be able to do, maybe we look at a rental rehab loan project. Is a owner going to access some of these funds to make some capital improvements to their property to continue to have the rent at an affordable rate for the community residents?
Well, thank you. I, I just see this as another tool in our toolbox, and maybe not our economic development, but our affordable housing toolbox.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Delaney?
So as far as priorities, that would still be staff and city, or how does that, how would those get set? Is that, I mean, do we get a list of items that would be approached with this, or, I mean, how do we set that going forward?
Yeah, and if I can chime in on that, if you don't mind. Essentially, what we're looking at is that, you know, we need to figure out, which ultimately you have to figure out, what those priorities are. And that will be a process in the future, once this is established, to look at that and then figure out what your top priorities are and what you want to see those funds used for. Then we can then, once we have those bullet points, if you will, we can then work with the CDA to find programs that address your particular issues. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Julie.
Hi.
I'm just excited because like, you know, our, everyone's talking about this is a great tool in our toolbox, and I've worked with you closely in doing some of this outreach on our Latino community. And I've seen, you know, we've seen the gaps, the, the, where we can do more and what, you know, so many things. We, we've seen it, and we hear the stories, and you're like, God, if we had, you know, more funds or if we could do this. And this is a great opportunity to continue. You are already doing great work, and I think this is just going to help a lot more. Yes, there's tons of work to be done to try to figure out all the little details and things, but we'll get there. But I just wanted to show some support and say this is a great thing we can partner up with you guys and, and do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn, okay? So first question is, is there a required match for the capital improvements by the property owner?
If you're talking about a rental prop, rental rehab program?
Or an owner-occupied rehab?
We would be looking to establish a program.
So we don't have that established yet?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other one is probably my biggest disappointment, and it's certainly not directed at the county or the City Council for that matter, but, so you have a federal government and creating policies that created high inflation, high interest rates, high energy costs, expensive regulation, and it makes it really difficult for anybody to buy a house, right? And to solve that problem, the state now taxes the most regressive tax it could possibly come out with on all households and businesses to, to try to fix this problem. So, so we have now watched two levels, levels of government harm the very households they're trying to help. Very disappointing in my viewpoint, because we're in effect are making everybody else's households much more difficult. We're actually taking money from households that are on a, on struggling and giving it to somebody else. Now, it always angers me whenever I see government create a problem with my money, our money, taxpayers' money, and then turn around and take taxpayers' money to try to solve the problem they created with our taxpayer money. It's very inefficient. It's a misuse of taxpayer funds, and, and it's very disappointing. I don't know if I felt any better saying that, because it doesn't seem like anything's going to change anytime soon, but here we are with this money sent to us, which is, you know, a nickel on a dollar for the damage they've caused with their bad policy. I almost said something I would regret, but, and we're, in effect, they're politically handing this off to the county to say, in the future, if, if it's not perceived as being effective, it's no longer the federal government and the state government's fault because we handed it off to you, and now it's your fault this isn't. and now it's your fault this isn't success, successful because they gave you a dime on a dollar. That's my 10 cents worth.
Here's our opportunity.
Here's our opportunity? I mean, what do we do? Our, our, our options are to turn the money back, uh, or have Scott County be our fiscal agent. And I have asked staff to put together a workshop for this council in, in February to talk specifically about affordable housing. Um, you know, make, make best out of what we've got, make lemonade out of lemons, I guess. Is that what they say?
Hey, you've talked about how seniors, uh, need housing and.
Well, right now the seniors are, if they're in their home, they're paying the regressive tax from the state and they're also getting hit on, on the inflationary impacts on everything in their life. And now they're paying for somebody else.
Well, maybe we have an opportunity here.
So it is what it is. I mean, we didn't create that bad policy, but let's, hopefully we can work through this and create some good policy that actually helps, but, uh.
Julie will help.
So where do we go from here? Um, no recommendation, just, uh.
No, sir. This is just, this is just.
Discussion item.
This is just a discussion. You know, we wanted to make sure that we got in front of it and then
Yep.
gave all of you something to think about and Julie and her staff are putting together. When is it going to the county, Julie?
The county will set their public hearing January 16th and then, uh, their first meeting in February.
So at some point, once Julie has an agreement and staff has worked through that, we'll bring that back for you to take a look at and give, get your ideas on, on if it's good enough or you'd like to see something different or however you want to handle it.
Will that be the official, uh, handoff of the fiduciary responsibility or?
Well, if you pass it at that point, that's, that's essentially what we're looking for, yes.
And what kind of timeline do we have to have our discussions on what our priorities are for how, affordable housing in our community?
Well, we probably could do that as part of our housing affordability discussion, you know, and, and if, uh, you know, we have those discussions, uh, you know, if it takes more than a couple of meetings, you know, that's fine. Uh, Julie has work to do on her end to get everything put together. Uh, when were the, I don't know when the funds are going to be made available. I don't know if you know.
You'll, you'll get your first payment in July.
Yeah.
We've got time to put this together and
All right.
We've got plenty of time for discussion.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
You, very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Brennan, thank you for being here. All right, that takes us to, in a community survey update, who is presenting this one?
Me, with likely some color commentary from Bill. Um, so we did our community survey again this year. We do it, um, we typically do it every two years. I think there was one three-year gap in the, the past there. We did, um, 3,000 households, um, 3,000 residences were randomly selected using RGIS files and then, uh, national citizen survey goes out and, um, actually verifies them with the post office and does all sorts of backend things. Of those 3,400 were returned, uh, when they adjust for those that were, um, returned due to being undeliverable. We had about a 14% response rate. That does put us in line with national averages. It's not great. We would always love more, um, but we're not unique in that, um, response rate. Using the same company time over time allows us to see our own trends over time and then it allows us to see our national benchmarks over time. At last count, they had over 600 communities that use that same tool and that number just keeps on growing. So that allows us to keep comparing to a bigger, larger and larger group of other communities throughout the country. Uh, they all use the same base tool, uh, so they, we all ask the same questions. Some cities will omit, um, certain aspects of it. If they have nothing to do with mobility in their community, they can't control it. They'll omit, uh, sections of that or certain questions in that, but we tend to just use the, um, full tool that they give us because this is what they do for a living. They're, they're very good at this and they've scripted all these questions very purposefully. Um, so residents continue to appreciate the overall quality of life in Shakopee. 84% rated Shakopee as excellent or a good place to live. 89% are very likely or somewhat likely to recommend Shakopee, uh, recommend living in Shakopee if asked. Uh, the one that I really liked there is 87% are very likely or somewhat likely to remain in Shakopee for the next five years. That is the highest rating that Shakopee has ever obtained in that category. We're typically pretty high, but that is definitely the highest that we've gotten. The local economy typically received pretty positive reviews. Residents show a little bit of concern. Again, we have a 59% rated the vibrancy of the downtown commercial area as excellent or good, which is the highest that we've ever gotten. Um, again, we're, we're typically kind of in that general range, but the highest that we've gotten in that. So that's something to be very proud of. Uh, 54% rated the employment opportunities as excellent or good as well. Uh, the one area that was a little bit lower there is 23% of respondents, um, said that the impact on their family is likely to be positive or somewhat positive over the next six months. Um, that is quite low. It's kind of in line with, uh, I think that's a relatively new question. It is in line with national benchmarks. Obviously, we'd like that to be a little bit higher, um, but because it is on par with national, I don't think there's anything horribly alarming there. Um, and mobility is, is another area that we always kind of rank pretty high on. Um, 65% say our overall transportation system is excellent or good. Um, and then we do have several areas that are actually higher than national benchmarks. Traffic flow on major streets, ease, ease of travel by car, ease of travel by public transportation, street repair and bus or transit services. Obviously, some of those are city services, some of those are partner agencies, but it's all great for our community. So we're proud of it all. There were a couple of areas, uh, that we had a little bit lower. Code enforcement and opportunities for education, culture and the arts, uh, at 41% and 54% favorable, uh, respectively. Those are similar to national benchmarks, so, um, kind of like the, uh, very positive, um, financial outlooks. It's, it's an area that we would like to see improved, but we are kind of in line with national benchmarks. So, um, again, nothing terribly over, um, overly concerning there. Uh, there are several areas where we're consistently high. Quality of the natural environment, overall economic health, overall feeling of safety, overall customer service of employees and overall quality of the services of municipal services. So those are areas where we always, um, are consistently very high ranking and that maintained this cycle as well. So in addition to the standard questions that all of the communities get asked as part of the national benchmark, we do have the opportunity to do custom questions, which we typically, uh, we typically take advantage of. We've asked questions in the past about, um, parks, finances. I think trash has come up a couple of times. This time we focused in on organized collection, parking in the downtown and communications tools that the city uses. And so, uh, I have better stats, hold on.
I did have one question from a council member earlier today that basically asked about open-ended questions. And although we would love to have that opportunity to have open-ended questions, this particular survey does not have open-ended questions and, um.
So we can, it's just very expensive because somebody has to transcribe them, um, the mailed in surveys. They have to sit there and type out and/or if people, um, do submit, there's online. It's obviously done online, but they still kind of, I don't know, go through and compile the results and make sure that the right answers are in the right spots, so for a cost.
And how do you chart that? It could be done.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we could take a look at that if that is, if there's a burning question that we want to open it in and if it's worth the price. Uh, I, I actually wasn't aware that we could, we could, uh, do open ended. I just probably, although I may have at the beginning, but pretty much over the years have said, we're not doing it because of the cost.
The cost.
But, uh, uh, if that's something in the future we want to think about then and we'll, we can see what that cost benefit analysis would be and, yeah.
I think open-ended questions lead to interpretation issues of
Right.
who it actually is that's interpreting what the open-ended question might be.
That's true.
I, I mean, overall, the, you know, the survey, if you think about what's been happening the last couple of years, uh, the overall survey actually came back a lot better in certain areas than I suspected it would just because of, you know, it's been, uh, trying time nationally.
Mm-hmm.
We're coming off of COVID. Uh, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of unrest and I, I was surprised that
To see how good the numbers were.
You know, that, that it, it came out with the results that it did. I will say it's always gratifying to see that people enjoy living here and want to live here and will recommend living here. That, that's just simply great news.
But then again, on the open-ended question, if, if, if council has a burning specific question or two, we can do that through our communications people on our own website.
Yeah, you can. Uh, just recognize that, that the responses here are, are based upon a survey. They're valued, uh, meaning that they have certain values, they are in certain districts and, you know, you're always going to get, uh, uh, input from people that care about a particular issue. And, you know, one of the interesting things for me is that, so we only got 400 surveys back. Now, that's certainly within the margins and that certainly means that we can still process the results. But it shows, it, it also shows that there's a lot, you know, there's not a real burning desire of people, uh, you know, to say, I need to, to make sure people understand, you know. We're always going to continue to try to get more results and, and, and we also, as you know, we do this survey, but we also do the online, which is not scientific. And, and, you know, and that just is a listing of what people care about and then we throw it on the paper. But, uh, overall, I think the results are just pretty darn good for the time that we just came out of.
Hey, you mentioned nuances with the timing and I, I, you look at that 87% of people likely to stay in Shakopee for the next five years. And I thought about interest rates, they may not want to move.
Well, that's true, they may not.
You know, so I could, you know, time does change some of your responses on some of these things and like you mentioned COVID.
Comments, questions of staff?
So let's say that there's a, I'm sorry, may I go?
Go ahead.
On the ones that are kind of, uh, rated not favorably, um, I'm just gonna, I'm just staring at it. So I'm just gonna call it out. Uh, code enforcement, that tend, that got a 48% fair rating. So it's kind of in the middle. Is, are you guys looking at something to be like, what can we do to make changes? What can we do, what's going on for that score to be that reason?
So two things that stick out to me right away for that score to be that reason is the people that are going to vote on code enforcement or provide input on code enforcement probably have pretty strong feelings, right? Either they have a trash house in their neighborhood and they think that the city's not doing anything because that trash house is still there, real or perceived. Um, or two, they've been called on by their neighbors as being the trash house in the neighborhood. So those are typically the responses that you get there. That being said, um, I mean, code enforcement in a town of 48, 50,000 people is very challenging, right? Like, we do have, we have a code enforcement officer in the police department and then we also have our, um, arguably the rental inspector pays a, plays a role in part of that. But we don't have one person that can drive up every day, every street, every single day when they, when they see things. And we have other city staff that are out in the community every day that are reporting things as well. Most of our complaints do come from residents. Um, so we implemented a new tracking, um, for that to make it more streamlined on the backend to, uh, make better use of the staff time that's being devoted to the code enforcement. Um, as far as proactively policing that, um, we don't at this point, no.
Yeah, and I wasn't just attacking, just code, it's just the one I saw right off hand on the paper. I'm like, what are, you know, what are we going to do with these results? And, um, that was just one of them that popped up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna point out a couple that I, come to my, and then I'll get to you, Mr. White.
Just on that comment.
Oh, go ahead.
No, just, I don't see how you can win on a code enforcement question.
Yeah, right.
You know, like you mentioned, so, sorry, that's all I have.
Very good. So the things that popped out at me is, um, availability of affordable quality housing, it went from 54 to 37. And cost of living went from 53 to 41. So these two are kind of connected. What's the impact the economy will have on you in the next six months? Um, I can't read what it used to be. It was 33, 35, I can't read it. The dot is right on the second three, but it's down substantially at more than 10 points, right? Um, the other one was rate the quality of services provided by each of the following. The city of Shakopee 68, federal government 37. Like I said earlier, when we were talking about the affordable housing, the, the, some of these policies are not productive to what you're trying to accomplish, not necessarily us or the county. But, you know, it, it would be nice if all levels of government would actually think about what their impacts of what they're doing is to the people that they serve. Because, uh, there's a lot of impact right now that is negatively affecting people from interest rates that you mentioned, buying a house, whether it's inflation, energy costs. Thank God we get to keep our gas stoves for maybe another year.
Let's put it in.
It's crazy. Stuff is kind of crazy, so.
I found my spot on custom questions, apologies for the delay on that. Um, in asking our residents how they're getting, um, information from our community or how our residents are getting communication from the city. The city website, hometown messenger and news media kind of ranked up at the top. City social media channels were lower on the mailed questions, the randomly selected ones, but higher on the online ones and given how we advertised the online survey, that makes complete sense.
Right.
And then we had asked about our, uh, waste system that has been in place for a very long time, the single hauler, uh, organized collection. There was an overwhelming amount. Um, 72% of the randomly selected households said that they would con, can, they would prefer to keep the current practice and utilize the savings that the city has negotiated on their behalf. Um, 8% said that they want the city to change their practice and then the remaining 20 was like, eh, we don't know.
No preference.
And then, uh, we also asked about parking in the downtown and, um, the people that were satisfied with parking downtown, uh, 74%. Um, and then the balance, about 25% was somewhat dissatisfied, so. And then we also asked about the installation of parking meters and/or a parking structure, both utilizing a property tax expenditure for the upfront capital, um, depending on, on what system that looked like. Obviously meters, you would be able to recoup some of that cost going forward, but you'd have to, um, put up the capital upfront to install everything. Uh, very strongly opposed to meters, uh, but very mixed on the actual parking structure. But of course with a parking structure, we would have to, it's a very, very big capital cost. We do have a couple of parking lots downtown where that could potentially take place. But that's a lot of concrete and a lot of engineering and.
Then there's those that adamantly want limited time slot parking in front of their business.
Their business.
Or not in front of their business, either one.
There's a lot of different wants and needs out there.
Yep.
Right.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nope, we are, I am working with our communications team on getting this on our website. We do have the last five, I believe, on there. Um, and in the, in the 10 years that we've been doing this with National Community Survey, they've been bought and sold a couple of times, so their output tools have looked a little bit differently. There used to be eight or 10 different reports. Now it's just 107-page report. Um, but they are trying to do a little bit better with their online tools. So we are still kind of, um, checking those out and weighing those and we will have some of them on our website. It does seem to break it down into smaller chunks, uh, much like the older reports did, um, but still not.
Yeah, I don't think somebody's going to read 107 pages.
No, they're not. But at least with some of the tools that they've made available to us, again, we're still trying to figure out how exactly they'll play with our website, but they would be able to, again, kind of click around through the, the various chapters, check out the facets of living and the economy and things like that. So that'll be up on our website, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks here.
All right.
All good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11A, city bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
Questions?
No questions.
11B liaison reports, I don't know where we started last time.
All right, you started over here, so we can start with.
This time?
Okay, 169 Coalition, we had no meetings. Um, of course, it was a Christmas break and other breaks there. Um, we do have our early, uh, 2024 hosting a legislative reception, uh, to State Capitol. That'll kick off here. Um, our first meeting for the year will be 11 January, so I'll have probably some updates after that. And, uh, what else we have here? Um, Spock, again, no meeting. Our meeting is actually next week again. Um, New Year's kind of set that up, kind of moved that meeting to next week. Uh, did have lunch with our general manager over there, Greg Drin, and we talked about the water treatment site and, uh, talked about the year and some other items. Um, next meeting again is Monday coming up. As far as miscellaneous stuff, um, holiday party, which was, uh, is always my second, second time going. Was actually always fun to go over there and talk to everybody. Um, did have a quorum, I think, so, but we did talk business. We just talked Christmas.
We did not talk.
We did not.
Not talk business. Also, I went to Captain J. Araris's, uh, retirement. Uh, he will definitely be missed, uh, so just putting that out there. He's a, was a really good, um, officer for the city, um, will definitely be missed. And I think that's all the excitement I had for the last two weeks, so.
Mr. White? Mr. Whiting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a lot. I think we did have a quorum at the holiday party, and the only decision we made was that everything was good food, and had some awards, and congratulations to those awarded. I think we can all agree on that. But other than that, a great holiday party. I do want to, I didn't have any other liaisons, but I do want to say, great job to our marketing and communication team on the tax breakdown video. That's, and many of their other videos too, but this was fresh in my mind, and I thought they did a great job on that. That's all I have.
Very good.
I don't have an actual liaison report, but I did also attend the holiday party, and it's always great to see all of our employees and say thank you to each and every one of them for all their hard work. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lara.
Yes, thank you. Went to say farewell to Captain Aris for his service to the city of Shakopee. Like we said, he will be greatly missed. And also went to the holiday party, as we all discussed, and it was a great time. And that is all I have for my liaisons.
Thank you, sir. My liaison report on the twentieth, I went, met with the Boy Scouts at the Sun Path. Topic was mayor and council's roles, somewhat their merit thing, so I spent about an hour, hour and a half there, both their parents and their kids. So that was a good time, actually. I gave the kids their little pens, and I told them, well, actually, I gave them to their den leader, and they have to earn that pen by doing something for this community above the discussion.
Yeah.
So, we'll see if they clean out a couple of storm drains, or shovel somebody's sidewalk or something. So that was kind of cool.
Yeah, if we get some.
December twenty-first, community center employee breakfast, or the holiday breakfast. My wife and I attended there. It was good to see all the employees and talk to the employees and stuff. I didn't eat myself, but everybody else was, so it must have been pretty good. Appreciate staff that was cooking, all the amazing chefs that we have. Twenty-second of December, Captain Aris's retirement. I have not seen it come through council yet, but Captain, Captain Aris was outstanding for this community. Guy's always fun. Always having fun, always happy-go-lucky, yet behind the scenes, he worked very hard on a lot of projects, so. Glad he's finally got the opportunity to retire and do something different, but it is, as Councilor Whiting says, a pretty good loss to the community. Things happen, not much you can do except reject, reject his resignation when it comes forward. Tell him he asked to stay. So, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for me, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item twelve, other business?
Mr. Mayor, just one item, probably for our center engineering staff, or County Road eighty-three and one oh one, it might be a county sign for, the sign for the road is completely white.
I saw that.
Can't read it at all.
Yep.
I don't know if it's changing or...
It's the, if you're traveling west, and it's the sign right at eighty-three, that's all white, and I think it's pointing to the frontage road. I think that's what it's telling us.
I'm not sure where it's pointing. It might be for Canterbury Row or eighty-three or something.
I was gonna, I was gonna take a picture, but then I was driving, and I thought that would look really bad if I put that out, but I was gonna call Commissioner Brennan. So can you, if you could take that back to the county, we'd appreciate that.
And can I make a point on that? See, that kind of information is critical for us, because how many people have driven by that and said, "Why hasn't the city done anything about that?"
Right.
The reality is, if we don't know, so I encourage residents to always contact us, you know, like, "Well, there's this pothole that's been there for three weeks." It's like, "Well, thanks for letting us know. We'll get on it now that we know about it." So that's, thank you, that's important.
Yeah, I would have been emailed, but I just thought of it, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you. Please, more people, please do that.
Any other business, Mr. Lara?
Yes, I do have other business. It has come to my attention that we had a price change at the community center in regards to our lookout indoor playground, and it has angered some citizens that the price went from a three-dollar flat fee to six dollars for residents and eleven dollars for non-residents per child. And I think that's quite the increase, and I don't ever recall that coming in through our, through our...
That would have come through the fee schedule, but...
I did not see that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, the acting director of park and recreation.
Yes, that would have come through the fee schedule. That was put in place while Jay was still here. We were looking at that again today, because yes, to your point, there was a lot of complaints about it. We do think that that may have been a fat finger removed in error, because it is shown in a different spot, and there was a lot that was deleted around it. So we were working on that today. There will likely be a modification coming forward to council at the next city council meeting.
And let's just do, let me do an overview of why there's a separate and different fee for resident and non-resident. So, the residents of Shakopee, you know, they pay their property taxes, a chunk of that property tax, almost three million dollars worth, pays for the debt on the building, two-point-two per year, million per year, and then the operational loss to operate the facilities. Where if you're living out in a township and you're not incorporated into Shakopee, zero of your tax bill comes to pay for that overhead. So, so why would they be getting a better deal on a service when they're not paying for any of the operational costs, the overhead, the building itself? And that's consistent through a lot of our fee structures for residents within Shakopee and non-resident use.
Sure. No, and that I understand, so, because right now, it's a three-dollar flat fee for anybody, whether you're resident or non-resident, for your per child. But from what I've, from what I've seen is it's six dollars for residents, and then eleven dollars for non-residents per child. So let's say I bring three kids, that's thirty-three dollars for the lookout. If you've ever been, I don't think it's worth eleven dollars per child. But I do understand what you're saying that...
It would be eighteen, because you're a citizen, you live in...
Well, let's say, let's say, because here, here my, here my thought process on this is, is I totally, I agree that there's, you know, that somebody that's paying taxes into it, you know, should pay less, because you're already paying for it in your taxes. But I'm worried that there might be a loss of revenue by people being deterred from an eleven-dollar charge per child to come into our city to, to use this facility, and then also then to go to a restaurant, or go somewhere else local and spend money here, when there are other places that they could go to. And, I mean, do I think there should be a difference between resident and non? Yes. Should it be eleven dollars? Not necessarily.
Right, okay. Very good.
What that fee was supposed to be?
Staff is still researching it this afternoon.
Just my two cents on it. I don't want it so low that buses are showing up from daycare centers either to make it, so it's not fun anymore.
Yeah, and recognize, it's always a balance, and, and, you know, to be upfront, this council has always been financially concerned about the community center, and that's why we look at these fees on a yearly basis, as well as the ice arena. And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come back, first meeting in February, and talk about the focus on the community center and the park and rec fees, but, in general. But, you know, staff is just trying to find that balance, and, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what the issue was, and we'll figure out what it should have been, and then we'll get back to you and make sure you know what's going on.
Okay, anything else? I just have one more for other business. A workshop date for affordable housing, and what I'm thinking of is we just, it's gonna be a very laid-back, come with what you're wearing, don't dress up, we'll sit out in the audience, and a couple tables set up or something, and just, let's just have an open discussion about the affordability of housing, whether it's, you know, somebody looking to get into a house, or existing households, you know? Just a overall discussion, we don't have to come to any conclusions. It's good to hear everybody's ideas, and a lot of times, I admit it, I got a great idea, dang, that's not such a good idea after all. And that's okay. That's, that's good to bounce it all around. So we need to come up with a date for a, for a workshop to start that discussion.
Are you referencing how we would spend some of this money we just talked about, or programs?
Well, I think, I think if we have just a general discussion, I think some of that is gonna, we're gonna flush out, you know, some of that'll probably come to the surface in that discussion, and maybe it doesn't. And if it, if it does, it does; if it doesn't, it doesn't. That's okay, but at least we have, we have that conversation, because we might get ideas from each other on what we want to do. And like I said, maybe, maybe you got a great idea, and after, you know, a half hour of discussing it, maybe it's not the right idea, or maybe it's the best idea we've heard.
Or build off of each other's ideas.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the bottom line is, when it comes to affordable housing, it's, if you're looking to build affordable housing, that's really the wrong question, because the affordable housing is land, labor, and lumber. Thank you, the three L's.
Inflation, yep.
And, and that's, that's essentially what defines the cost of a house.
Yep.
However, naturally occurring affordable housing and looking at programs to keep, in other words, we know that there are people that go out there and they buy something low, they throw a couple, you know, twenty, thirty thousand into it, and they sell it for double what they paid for it. But what that does is that takes it off of the affordable housing market, and then it places it in a higher, in a higher bracket. So, the key is, is trying to preserve that naturally occurring affordable housing, much like Julie was talking about, programs that, you know, hey, let's, let's fix some windows, let's fix that roof, let's keep you in your home thing. And then, if it has to be sold later, it's at a price that is compatible and available, and hopefully then someone other than someone coming in to rehab.
I think there's a million ways to go about this, so I think, once we just start talking, like I said, we don't have to accomplish anything that first meeting. Maybe, maybe we leave it with listening to everything, and we have a second meeting.
And brainstorming and...
Yeah. But I, I was looking at February sometime, and if we want to do offshoot Tuesdays, it would either be the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh. So if you want to check your schedules for that and...
February thirteenth, I'll probably not be in town.
Okay, so the twenty-seventh is a Tuesday toward the end of the month. You can all...
I will, I will get that out to you all tomorrow, and you can kind of show me, or tell me what you're looking at.
And I think we have, the funds aren't coming until July, so, you know, if we can't work it out and it runs into March, that's fine too. You know, let's try to, let's try to have a good plan laid out for what we're thinking for bullet points by July, or June, probably June, huh, Mr. Reynolds? Because we're not at the last minute.
And then at some point, I think we'd have to bring Julie back and see what flies and might not with the program she's...
Right.
We want to probably get on the front end, so she can get some of that in front of the counties.
And that's why I think if we, if we have our bullet points by June, the money's not coming until July. All she's bringing back in February is, do we want the county to be the fiscal agent?
Correct.
If they're gonna be the fiscal agent, here's the memo of understanding, or whatever, joint powers agreement.
Yes, sir.
Any changes to that legal document that you want for them to be the fiscal agent?
Would that be the document we put some of our nuanced goals in?
We could. I mean, it's not necessary, because ultimately, anything will have to come back before you.
And I don't think we're gonna have our, our goals by early February.
Yeah, so I mean, we can, we'll outline the bones of the structure, and then, and then, it could change. So if council decides, you know what, we've been focusing on this for a couple of years, we've decided we won't look at this, then we don't have to worry about that. It's just an internal piece for us, so then you can make a determination yearly maybe as well, how you want to, how you want to do it.
They got projects in Shakopee already. Would this be something, they'd be looking like the central school site, they might, would they be able to use some of them funds?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, yeah, hard to say. So I think projects, they're already working on projects in Shakopee.
Yeah. All right, so let's take care of, any other business?
Just another quick question. As far as like workshops, are there any others planned for the year? I mean, I know we, we got towards the budget cycle, we started seeing the different departments come through, and kind of, can we get any additional workshop scheduled?
Would you like a workshop on a specific topic?
Definitely, I can put some together that I think would be of interest anyways, as far as topics anyways.
Okay.
We were talking about some emergency management.
That's the only thing that we have scheduled at this point. I mean, it's not scheduled yet, but generally, it'll be earlier in the spring.
And...
That's the only thing that we have currently.
And that goes out to any council member. If you think there's something worthy of us having a brainstorm session over, bring it forward, we'll make it happen.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so item thirteen. We'll need a motion to go into closed session, and we're going to ask whoever makes that motion to quote the Minnesota State statute that allows us to do that. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, discuss labor negotiations according to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero-three subdivision B.
There are second to the motion.
Second.
It's a second.
Who seconded that motion?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Whiting, seconded by Councilor Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in closed session.[1734.82]